My name is Rich Ennis.
Recording in progress.
And I'm going to call to order a public hearing for consideration of, and let's see, what is it? CU?
Conditional use.
Conditional use 125, an application for conditional use with site plan, the application for the Donovan Smith Manufactured Home Community. The subject property is Sussex County Tax Parcel Number 335-8.14-4300, located on the west side of Donovan Road in the city of Lewis.
I'm just gonna give my interpreter.
Yes, so, and we have an interpreter, and I want her, I would, gonna ask her to interpret that, and then we're gonna ask our attorney for the evening to explain the rules of interpretation for us as well.
Okay. Audencia pública para considerar CU Raya 1 Raya 25, una solicitud de uso condicional con plano del sitio, la solicitud para la comunidad de casas prefabricadas Donovan Smith. La propiedad en cuestión es la parcela física del condado de Sussex, número 335 Raya 814 Raya 43 00, ubicada en el lado oeste de Donovan's Road en la ciudad de Lewis.
Muchas gracias. I would like to just clarify before we even get started that the purpose of tonight's hearing is for the commissioners to ask clarifying questions. It is a hearing. We want to hear both from the applicant and from the public what their concerns are about this application. And so we are going to be able to have an opportunity at a later time to discuss the specifics of this, but this is an opportunity for the commissioners to hear about this application. I just want to make it clear to our commissioners that we're gonna have another opportunity to hear and discuss this further. Yes.
Okay. So, va haber una discusión sobre la aplicación de... Can you repeat that again, I'm sorry?
Yeah, you gotta do smaller.
Yeah, smaller, you need, just watch me, I'll give you the small bites.
Okay.
Yes. Lo siento. I want to make clear that the purpose of this hearing is for the commissioners to hear both from the applicant, to ask clarifying questions of the applicant, and also of the public.
Okay. So, el propósito de esta cita es para los comisionarios para discutir las aplicaciones? And the applications de, del público?
Sí.
Okay.
Clara.
Yes.
And at this time, I would like to ask our counsel to explain to us what the purpose of this hearing is, the ground rules for the hearing, and also to explain how interpretation is going to work, especially for me, since apparently I need some coaching in that regard, so.
Okay. El abogado va a explicar el propósito, las regulaciones, y cómo la interpretación va a funcionar.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Max Walton, for those who don't know me.
Yo soy Max Wal-
Walton.
Walton, para las personas que no me conocen.
It's an honor to be back.
Es un honor estar aquí.
So, I thought I might start with actually a little bit of background on this for some folks who are unaware of the background of this in a very general manner.
All right. Voy a comenzar con información sobre mi historia para comenzar.
I have been involved in this application for a very long time.
Esta, yo soy parte de esta aplicación por mucho tiempo.
This application began with an effort by the state, the BPW, and eventually the city of Lewis.
Okay. Esto comenzó como un esfuerzo en parte del estado BPW en la ciudad y la ciudad de Lewis.
There was ultimately an agreement that was put together to provide water and sewer for Donovan Smith.
Esto fue un arreglo para, para, para que la comunidad tenga la instalación del agua y el apastamiento.
For those of you who know me, it's very difficult for me to speak with an interpreter. I'm sorry.
Para mí es un poquito difícil para hablar con una interpreta.
Nonetheless, the application for the grant funding required annexation into the city of Lewis.
La aplicación para los fondos, okay, para la, para la anexión de Donovan, para la, en la ciudad de, la ciudad de Lewis.
And the property was eventually annexed into the city of Lewis.
Y la propiedad fue anexada a la ciudad de Lewis.
And at that time, or subsequent to that time, excuse me, at that time,
Y en ese tiempo?
All of the manufactured home lots within Donovan Smith.
Todas las propiedades de casas prefabricadas.
They became non-conforming lots, or leased areas.
Se hicieron lotes que no son, inconforme.
Subsequent to that, after that.
Después de eso.
There were some, the city council of Lewis considered some adjustments to the conditional use provisions within the code for manufactured homes.
La ciudad de Lewis. Cambios a la ciudad, la ciudad de Lewis. Para la comunidad de casas prefabricadas.
And they were eventually passed.
Y eventualmente pasaron.
And if you're interested, it's Section 196.
Y si usted está interesado, es sección...
J2 of the code.
Código 197 Raya 96J.
So, following that.
Después de eso.
The site plan that's before you this evening
Okay. Con el plan del sitio, es para consideración.
And this application for conditional use.
Para uso condicional.
There may have been some confusion, but it needs to be for the entire property, for the manufactured home.
Tiene que ser para la propiedad entera. Hubo confusión.
Tonight, the hearing, as the chair has stated.
Okay. Esta noche, la audiencia, como se, para considerar.
Is to take testimony.
Es para tomar testimonio.
By the applicant.
Por el aplicante.
And the public.
Y el público.
Regarding the application for a conditional use.
Sobre la aplicación para usar el uso condicional.
And as part of a conditional use application.
Y como parte del uso condicional, aplicación.
The applicant is required to also submit.
El aplicante también tiene que somitir.
A site plan.
Una solicitud del complano.
The ground rules for this evening are.
Las, okay. El proceso para esta noche.
The process for tonight.
El proceso para esta noche.
Is to, basically, the applicant will give, to give their presentation first.
El aplicante va a presentar primero.
And the public will then speak thereafter.
Y el público puede hablar después.
And you are permitted to ask questions.
Y ustedes están permitidos a pedir, hacer preguntas.
But the debate or consideration will happen at your next meeting.
Pero su consideración va a ser escuchada el próximo.
With that.
Con esto.
And because I'm trying to get as much in with as little words as I can.
Porque estoy tratando de dar mucha información.
I didn't know if anyone had any questions.
Yo no sé si alguien tiene preguntas.
You're the chair.
Claro, y muchas gracias. The chair is going to use his prerogative tonight to limit comments by both the commissioners.
Go ahead.
Okay. So. The personas van a tener tres minutos para dar su.
Excuse me, questions by the preguntas de los commissioners.
Las preguntas de los comisionarios.
Sí. Y comments de los públicas.
Y comentarios del público.
Tres minutos.
Tres minutos.
Solamente.
Only, solamente.
And we are going to time that.
Y vamos a tomar la hora.
Right. Because we have people here who have families that they need to get home to, and our counsel also has a time limit, so.
Hay familias que tienen familia que tienen que, you know, que tienen que en casa, y también el counsel.
Yes, we are all gonna be timed.
Would you like us to help you?
Oh, yes, please, thank you.
Limiting hablar.
Yep, and Blue is, our technician is also gonna help time us on that. So, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so first, we are going to move to, so we have a question of here.
I have a, yes, I have a questions for the solicitor.
Stop, let her translate.
Yo tengo preguntas.
Now, off the record here, for the translator, this is my third, the third paragraph of my questions on page one. The third paragraph, yes, there, okay, good.
Can I interject that during, hold on, that during the, the information you were relaying, I had a really fast question. Would that be okay?
Okay, go ahead.
Sure.
Just to clarify.
Una pregunta bien rápida que hacer.
Was, were the lots conforming when they were in the county before annexation? Were they under a different zoning category?
Let's translate that.
Okay. Las casas, los lotes, okay, the, la propiedad es para las casas prefabricadas. Ella quiere saber si estaban en conforme antes de la anexión? Before the annexation? Okay, antes, no, no estaban.
And yes, and were under different regulations?
Y sí estaban debajo de diferentes regulaciones.
And they are now under R2, correct?
Y ahora están en conforme en, con R2.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm restarting.
Sorry, Karen, thank you.
That's okay, so, and that's the question for Mr. Walton. Am I correct to understand that this CU application represents the first time that surveys of individual manufacturing home sites will be submitted for examination by the planning commission and the mayor of city council?
Wait, wait, that is way too much.
She has it already. She has it, she can, she can just read what I gave her.
Okay.
Because I know, I was an interpreter, and I know how it works. If you don't have the text before, we're gonna be here at midnight. So I've given her translation of all the questions I'm going to ask.
Who just got here.
And if it is the case, why is the developer or Donovan Smith submitting a CU application for the placement of manufactured home into an existing manufactured home park before the areas where the 31, or whatever number that may be, where the 31 new manufactured homes will be located, before the validity of these spaces is recognized and established by the city council as manufactured home sites? To clarify, right now, the city council, as far as I know, has never had a survey which showed these individual lots with meets and bounds, and therefore, the city council has never validated the home sites. And here, we are being asked to make a recommendation on the placements of the structures. How can the developer ask to place structures on the lots or manufactured home sites which have not?
Is this all written down in your?
Yeah, you can just read my question and just clarify.
Thank you, thank you.
That's, that's what my question is for Mr. Walton.
Tengo razón al entender que usted, que esta solicitud de uso condicional representa la primera vez que se presentará estudios de sitios individuales de casas prefabricadas, que es su examen por parte de la comisión de planificación, el alcalde y el consejo municipal. Y si es el caso, ¿por qué está, está presentando una solicitud de uso condicional para la colocación de casas prefabricadas en un parque de casas prefabricadas existente antes de que el consejo municipal reconozca y establezca las áreas donde se ubicarán las 31 nuevas casas prefabricadas con sitios oficiales de casas prefabricadas?
Yes, that's it, that's it.
That's, okay.
So, are you ready? The purpose of the conditional use with the site plan application?
The...
Purpose of the conditional use with the site plan application.
El propósito del uso condicional con plano del sitio.
Is to, for the first time.
Por primera vez.
Establish, conclusively establish.
Conclusiva.
The locations and the meets and bounds.
La localación y las medias.
Of the land leased area, which hasn't happened before.
De las propiedades a renta, de los lotes o las propiedades a rendamientos, de arrendamientos.
Thank you. Are there any other questions before I turn it over to Mr. Pardee?
Hay algunas preguntas antes de dar la conversación al señor.
The name of the.
Yes.
Rich, I'm sorry. Barbara?
I'm sorry, I need to hear.
Just a question. Should the meets and bounds description include the easements on the property?
Not, you caught me with one I don't fully know the answer to. Sorry, I'm gonna let her do your question. I'm gonna let her translate the question first, and I'll give you an answer. Where's the freaking thing?
Barbara, could you please repeat the question?
Yes.
No, 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 I need it repeated, for my notes.
Yes, I was asking if the meets and bounds description should also include the meets and bounds for the utility easements?
And I'm gonna repeat. Give a question, and I'll give the answer.
Barbara, will they do their thing? Is that a requirement of R2 to show the easements?
Hold on, do the question.
Yeah, is that a requirement under R2 to show the easements?
That's theory.
Take your hand off, take your hand off.
Okay. Quiere saber si las dimensiones de las, de las áreas del plan necesitan área para las utilidades? La respuesta es no. Están presentados en otros planes.
They need to merge at some point. I don't know that they need to be shown on the plan, but I'll have to verify and check that for you.
Tengo que verificar, posiblemente en otro plan están juntos.
Mr. Pardee, por favor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner.
Buenas tardes.
For the record, my name is John Pardee.
Mi nombre es John Pardee.
I'm an attorney with a law firm.
Soy abogado con la.
Brockstedt Mandalas Federico.
Federico Brockstallie Mandalas Federico.
And I represent Donovan Smith Mobile Home Park.
Y yo represento Donovan Smith, de, de los parques, del parque de casas prefabricadas de Donovan Smith.
Just for the record, I've given the interpreter a copy of my notes to help her follow my comments.
Tengo copia de sus notas.
As Mr. Walton indicated.
Como el señor Walton ha indicado.
The Donovan Smith Mobile Home Park was annexed into the town in April of 2022.
El parque de Donovan Smith de casas prefabricadas fue anexada el 14 de abril.
There are. There are a total of 130 home sites.
Hay total de 130 casas prefabricadas.
Of which 90 home sites are presently occupied.
Y de los 130, 90 están ocupados.
The site plan shows that there is 1.621 acres of dedicated open space.
El plano del, del sitio indica que hay 1.621 acres.
I will attempt to demonstrate to you tonight.
Voy a demostrar esta noche.
That the application before you.
Que la aplicación antes de usted.
Complies with your comprehensive plan.
Consiste con el plan de la ciudad.
And complies with all applicable code requirements.
Y sigue los, los códigos de la ciudad.
First, the Donovan Smith Mobile Home Park is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the city's comprehensive plan, which satisfies subsection A, section 197-96 of the city code.
Consiste de 197 Raya 96J, requisitos encontrados.
I will read now from page 20 of the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Update.
Voy a leer de la página 20 sobre el, el plan comprensivo al día.
Quote, "Lewis recognizes the need for the development of additional affordable workforce housing in the greater Lewis area, and will consider opportunities consistent with defined city policies to work as an effective partner on behalf of current and future residents. The city continues to have a need for affordable housing."
La ciudad de Lewis reconoce la necesidad para el desarrollo de casas adicionales que son, que es, que es para, para los que están trabajando y para casas que son de buen, de buen, de buen precio en la ciudad, en el área de Lewis, y va a considerar las oportunidades consistente con las policías, las policías definidas de la ciudad de Lewis para trabajar en una manera que es corriente y para los futuros residentes. La ciudad continúa, continúa tener la necesidad para casas que son, así que.
On April 14, 2022, Lewis mayor and city council voted unanimously to annex the Donovan Smith Manufactured Home Park into the city. The move signaled a desire to improve quality of life standards for the residents of the community. The city will now provide sewer service, clean drinking water, police, and code enforcement services, as well as trash pickup to the residents of this community. Donovan Smith residents had been requesting annexation since early 2017 to improve road, water, and quality of life conditions. This has been a collaborative project between the city, state, and BPW to use funding mechanisms like the revolving loan fund to provide better quality of life conditions.
En abril, en el 14 de abril del año 2022, el alcalde de Lewis y la ciudad consejo votó... Por una medida, la anexión de Donovan Smith parque de casas prefabricadas en la ciudad. La mudada significó el deseo de mejorar la calidad de vida, los estándares para los residentes de la comunidad. La ciudad ahora va a tener servicio y bastante miento, acceso al agua limpia y al canda riado. Agua limpia de tomar, policía y codo de servicios enforzados. También el recojo de la basura a los residentes en la comunidad. Los residentes de Donovan Smith han pedido la anexión desde el año 2017 para mejorar las calles, el agua y la calidad de la vida, las condiciones de la vida. Esto ha sido un proyecto colaborado entre la ciudad, el estado, y BPW para el uso de mecanismos fondos como el préstamo, el fondo de préstamos... Giratoria para mejorar la calidad de la vida, de las condiciones de vida.
Because Donovan Smith Mobile Home Park was a pre-existing community at the time of its annexation into the city, the application obviously complies with subsections B through H of section 197-96 of the city's zoning ordinance.
Porque Donovan Smith, la comunidad de casas preexistía, existía al tiempo de la anexión en la ciudad. La aplicación... Copia sub 6... Oh, no, sorry, perdón.
Mr. Pardee, could you please...
Cumple secciones B y H de sección 197, 96 de la zona de la ciudad ordenada.
I was just asking to repeat the code, please.
Sure.
Sections B through H of which numerical numbers?
197-96.
Thank you.
For the interpreter, this part is not in my written comments. So, for example, in section 197-96C.
Por ejemplo, la sección 197, raya 96, sección C.
The code asks you to determine whether the application will or will not be detrimental to the use, peaceful enjoyment, economic value, or development of surrounding properties.
Can you repeat that, please?
Sección C, no va a ser detrimental al uso o el gusto de tranquilidad, el valor económico, o el desarrollo de las propiedades alrededor.
Obviously, the community existed before its annexation and nothing about its use changed upon its annexation.
La comunidad existió antes de la anexión a la ciudad y no cambió... Y no cambió al uso de una comunidad de casas prefabricadas.
So because nothing changed, it cannot be said that mere annexation causes this community to be detrimental to the use, peaceful enjoyment, economic value, or development of surrounding properties.
Porque no ha habido cambios... Como no ha habido cambios de la anexión, no se puede decir que... No va a ser detrimental al uso o el gocimiento del valor económico también y el desarrollo de las propiedades alrededor. O el valor económico.
And the same holds true for all of the other requirements in sections 197, 96, B through H.
Y todos ciertos en los requisitos de 197, raya 96, de B a J.
Moreover, as borne out by the documentation submitted with the application, the Donovan Smith Mobile Home Park complies with all the requirements set forth in subsection J2, section 197-96 of the city's zoning ordinance.
La aplicación submetida, J2, del parque de casas prefabricadas.
So, for example...
Por ejemplo.
The community existed prior to its annexation into the city.
Las propiedades existían antes de la anexión a la ciudad.
And that satisfies subsection J2A.
Y eso satisfecha la sección J2A.
Likewise, except for pre-existing legal non-conformities, all home sites in the community comply with the dimensional and use regulations set forth in subsections...
Stop, stop, stop. Except... Okay, okay. Going back and forth, okay.
Excepto a las no conformidades legales de casas que preexistían. A las propiedades en la comunidad cumplen, satisfacen las dimensiones e las reglaciones que están establecidas en las secciones J2B y J2C, sección 196, raya 96 de la zona de la ciudad ordenada.
So she already referenced the sections in Spanish. I'll just say them to you again in English. It's J2B and J2C of section 197-96. So, for example, the application satisfies the requirement for minimum lot area in section J2B1.
La aplicación satisfecha los requisitos mínimos de lot de área J2B1.
And the same holds true for all of the other requirements in subsection J2B and J2C.
Y los mismos de J2B y C.
The application also complies with all of the requirements set forth in subsections J2D through J2N of the city's zoning ordinance.
Complies... Cumple... Sección D a N.
For example...
Por ejemplo.
The community includes a minimum of 1.5 acres of open space acceptable to all manufactured... I'm sorry, accessible to all manufactured home occupants and suitable for recreation. That's in J2E.
J2E, okay. Eos... Okay, eos down, bit... Bring up and down.
I'm going to request a recess.
I'm almost done, actually, Mr. Chair.
Okay, if you're almost done, yeah, why don't you go and complete your two sentences.
Can we perhaps make sure that... Does anyone need clarification in the audience? Or can people hear the interpreter? If, I don't know, is there any way we can check in?
We're gonna... Why don't we... What we're gonna do is allow Mr. Pardee to complete his two sentences and then we're gonna call for a recess and discuss.
La comunidad da lo mínimo de 1.2 acres a todos en la comunidad. Y 1.2 acres accesible a todos en la comunidad. O 1.5 acres.
In conclusion...
En conclusión.
The application is consistent with the City of Lewis comprehensive plan?
La aplicación es consciente con el plan comprensivo.
And complies with all of the requirements for conditional use approval set forth in Article 13.
Y cumple con todos los requisitos del uso condicional aprobado en artículo 8, sección 197, 96, de la orden de la zona de la ciudad.
So she got ahead of me a little bit.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. It complies with all the requirements for conditional use approval set forth in Article 13, section 197-96 of the city's zoning ordinance. That's what she just said. Last sentence, "For these reasons, the application warrants favorable consideration and approval." Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Por esta razón, la aplicación se considera favorable y aprobada.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm calling for a recess and we will... For five minutes and we'll reconvene after that.
Thank you.
Un receso de cinco minutos y después nos vamos a reunir.
It's a tight ship we're running.
Please find, in this letter, I see you approved, please, for manufacturing homes of 31 lots at Donovan Smith, and each hit. And then below it, I have submitted a list of the homes and the maximum sizes I would put in listed lots, square footage of those lots, and lot coverage percentage. I have also included certain lots and most of our league in a private. We don't see anything.
No, it's not in the material.
That shows the actual...
This, to read, this, yes, yes, it is. It, it, yeah. And that's, that's where all my questions are going to, that everything is to be read off.
All right. All right, we are, we are reconvening the, the hearing.
Vamos a continuar con la cita.
On the conditional use site plan.
El uso de...
For Donovan Smith.
El uso condicional de Donovan Smith.
We are going to suspend the translation for this evening and instead,
Vamos a suspender la interpretación esta noche.
We are going to translate the entire hearing.
Vamos a interpretar todo en...
Both in Spanish and in English.
En español y en inglés.
Over the next 10 days.
En los últimos, en los diez días.
So, anyone here who wants to speak either in Spanish or in English,
Cualquier persona que desee hablar en español o inglés.
Will have their testimony translated.
Puede tener su testimonio.
And that will be posted online.
Interpretado y va a ser posta, en la, en la red.
And become an official part of the hearing record.
Va a estar en el sitio de, de la ciudad de Lewis.
Si. I apologize, but I think that that will be a more efficient way
Eso va a ser más eficiente.
For us to proceed.
Para nosotros para seguir.
Can we take a vote on that?
Podemos votar.
No.
Could we possibly just allow residents who would like the translation to come up and identify they want the translation and only use it for, for those who need the translation? So not using it for everyone. Should I say it shorter?
No, 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 that's okay. I have a different cover.
Podimos permitir...
Anyone who is just using interpreter.
Cualquier persona que desee usar el intérprete. Para usar el intérprete.
Yeah, this, this will, if there are anyone who is not a reader, this will deny their access to the material?
It's important.
I think we have an option for that.
Question?
I think we have an option for that.
When the translation is posted, can it be posted both written and oral?
I think so.
So it's recorded?
I think so.
What if it can't? What if, what if it can't?
So what we are trying to do is find out whether the translation can be both oral and written.
Yes, we can do that. Will you give me a thumbs up?
La interpretación va a estar escrita y también en oral. En inglés y en español.
Gracias. Okay.
So I think probably the most appropriate thing to do is, since Mr. Partey finished his presentation, is to find out if any members of the commission have questions of Mr. Partey.
Yes, thank you. So we are gonna enforce the three-minute rule here.
Okay.
I'm looking at you.
I'm gonna speak very fast then. Okay, so, I noted that no open area corresponds to a lot in the sequencing of lots identification numbers indicated on the map, including in the agenda materials, except for the open area corresponding to Lot B 15. In addition, setbacks were depicted on Lot B 15. Do you expect that if this CU application is approved, Donovan Smith will be allowed to convert Lot B 15 into a manufacturing home site in the future, either with or without city approval? More generally, are all areas marked open space or open area between two lots on the BPW map you submitted intended to become permanent once an official survey of the site is approved? Area E 16 is identified as no lot in the proposed lot listing attached to your CU application. Why is then is area E 16 displayed with internal setbacks and a home site identification number in the BPW map submitted with your application? Areas C 8 and D 10 are displayed on the lot map as unfilled. These are the only unfilled lot areas that are not covered by your CU application. Is this an oversight or is there another explanation? Conversely, Lot D 14, which is displayed as already filled on the BPW lot map you submitted, is on the list of lots covered by the CU application. Are we to understand that the representations of manufactured home on the lot map you submitted is not as of the same date as of the proposed lot listing? Or is there another explanation? Areas G 12 and G 13, which are not included in the 31 locations where you propose to install new manufactured homes, are showing combined as a single lot on the lot map submitted with your CU application. Are area G 12 and G 13 identified as a single lot or as two separate lots in the surveys that you were, that were submitted with your application according to your letter dated March 1, 2024? I should mention this, that the surveys were not included in the materials that were posted for the hearing. Same question for area E 1 and E 2 and E 7 and E 8. And is it your understanding that once a lot is approved, a single manufacturer home site, Donovan Smith will not subsequently be able to divide it into two distinct manufacturing home sites without a new review and approval process by city authorities? Area E 1 and E 2 and also E 25 are displayed as currently filled on page nine of the agenda material but unfilled on page 10. Which page is accurate? I did not see in your application or the BPW lot map the required notes indicating for each existing structure whether it will be retained or removed. Do you intend for these notes to be supplied with a survey of the property before the planning commission examines your application? My questions does not apply to structures that were occupied in 2023 when the city included the property in R 2 zoning. And I can give you my question in writing, this way you will be able to answer.
Imagine if you had to translate that.
Do you want me to attempt to answer all of that?
You can just answer if you want by saying that you will resubmit a map with the corrected information and that would take care of all of it.
So, let me say that with one notable exception, we rely upon the survey map that was provided rather than correspondence that was submitted prior. So for example, the open areas that you referenced, I think you mentioned B 15, which on this survey map is not really designated as B 15, but it is shown as an open area between B 14 and B 16. We believe that that is a surveying error and that is in fact a lot on which we would intend to place a home. And the same would go for the open areas shown between A 12 and A 13, between A 16 and A 17, and between A 20 and A 21, and anywhere else on the survey. With regard to the lots where there are combined lot numbers, so for example, G 12 and G 13 is a good example, also E 1 and E 2, those are just one lot. And I think to get at your concern, it would not be our intention or purpose to subdivide those into two separate lots. If that was something that was possible to do, we understand that we would have to come back to you and ask for permission to do that because what we're asking you to review and approve is what's reflected on this survey map. And that would be a deviation from, from the map that you would be asked to review and approve. So any changes along those lines would need to be blessed by the, by the city. What I'd like to do with regard to your other comments and questions, all of which I think are very, very good questions and very fair questions, if I may, I'd like to try to respond to them in writing to save time. Be happy to do that and submit it to the commission for your consideration at whatever the appropriate time is.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
I, I have a quick question. Will you provide the markings for where wetlands are?
I'm sorry, the...
The marking of where the wetlands are that's done by the state on the site map?
Show the parking spots?
No, wetlands, wetlands.
Oh, the wetlands. I don't know if there was, I believe there was a wetlands delineation done at some time.
We have not seen it. We, we need to see it.
Okay, well, I'll endeavor to get it.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Commissioner Thompson, the maps that were just shown up here, there's three of them, I put them together, I'm trying to get my mind around the configuration of the park. But in your supplement number one of March 2nd, item D talks about a buffer strip 50 foot all around it. I don't know how you can achieve that based on this map because the lots run right up to the line. Is that, am I reading that wrong?
No, sir, you are not. You're absolutely correct. With regard to all of the lots that back up to the community to the northeast, there is simply no way that we can comply with that setback. I believe...
So that was a provision of the approval then?
Yes.
Because you could not achieve that?
Correct. Because all of those homes and all of those lots, as they existed prior to annexation, violated that. There was simply no way for us to comply with that setback. So that would be one of the things we would be seeking your consent for.
There is no buffer requirement.
Pardon? That's right for... That's right, I believe the code was changed. Janelle reminded me that the buffer requirement was removed when the ordinance was amended on December 11, 2023. So the 50-foot buffer was eliminated, but there are rear yard setbacks now. And I think that, as I recall, the thinking at that point in time was to try to do the best we could to fit what existed previously into your code. And, and so we did that by eliminating the buffer and creating different setbacks, lot widths, minimum areas and so forth. And I don't want to put words in Janelle's mouth, but I believe the philosophy was try to draft the ordinance in a way that minimizes the number of non-conformities that were already existing when the community got annexed.
Okay. And just one quick question, again, Janelle, you probably know this, does a fire marshal need to look at this from a standpoint of safety and...
No. Again, you're looking at existing houses on, on existing lots. And based on the separation distance that is adopted in the code, any new house will have to comply with those separation distances, which is, which the city's requirement is in compliance with the fire marshal's rules and regulations.
But the existing houses do not need to?
They do not.
Okay.
They exist. And again, a lot of them are legal non-conforming with regards to setbacks and other items. So again, we're recognizing them as how they exist. Anything new has to definitely comply with the, with the rules and regulations.
If I may piggyback on that, and the record will bear this out, I believe that this question was raised previously and I believe it was discussed at a city council mem, or city council meeting. My recollection is that the, I think it was the city's fire marshal looked at that question and concluded that the existing community had sufficient separation, that there was not, in his view, any imminent safety risk from his perspective and that the...
There's a letter to that effect in the record.
That was my recollection.
The city does not, just for clarification, the city does not have a fire marshal. The city had, I believe, the city reached out to the office of the state fire marshal and the chairperson has her hand raised online.
I stand corrected.
I would recognize the, the chair of the Lewis Planning Commission. Melanie? Is she there, Blue?
We also got better.
Yep, welcome back to her. Other questions from the commissioners?
I'm over, I'm over here. Yes. Will the sprinkler requirement for new construction be applicable? Why not?
No, because manufactured homes have to meet HUD requirements and the way the city's code was adopted, because, and manufactured homes have different code requirements. They do not meet the ICC building code requirements. They meet the HUD requirements for manufactured homes.
Following up, can we request that as a condition in the future? We have in the City of Lewis passed an ordinance that new construction requires a sprinkler system.
That would render the manufactured homes unaffordable. No question.
But the proximity of these manufactured homes to other homes that are not fire safe.
I'm gonna answer that quite...
It's, it's not a requirement under the law and as a practical matter, it would torpedo this project if you had to sprinkle the homes. It's just way too cost prohibitive.
I can answer that question in writing in Attorney Club Room memo.
Thank you. My next question, are there any manufactured homes that need to be removed because they're unoccupied and do not meet the requirements of HUD? And have you removed or replaced any manufactured homes or derelict trailers since the annexation report in 2018?
I know the answer to your first question is in the negative. Removed any since the annexation?
Well, the HUD code started in 1973 and I don't believe there are any homes in there that would have HUD ceiling.
So, so there aren't any that would be required to be removed and we haven't removed any for that reason? The 90 homes that are there presently are all HUD compliant.
Thank you.
Sure.
Barbara?
Yes. I noticed in your application package, there are boxes for site development plan requirements and none of them are, are marked as to whether there are...
That is used for new development applications. In this instance, you have an existing development where those sections of code do not apply because you have an existing development that is going through the conditional use process.
Will it apply for the new applications?
No. When a new home is placed, all they're gonna get is a building permit. You, this application is being looked at holistically as the community, for the entirety of the community. You're not looking at 30 new homes. You're looking at the community in its entirety. And once that is approved through mayor and council, the site plan will be finalized and then people can... and then people can start submitting for building permits. And they will go through the permitting process, and staff will ensure they comply with the HUD regulations, the zoning code, FEMA regulations, all of those, depending on where the lots, the land leased areas are within the community.
So at that time, we'll have a survey that shows floodplain?
Yes. There is, the staff review letter indicated they need to identify where the floodplain line is on the site plan.
Janelle, when you certify me, when you say that what is going to be asked of us is to make a recommendation for against the approval of the site as a whole, it was my understanding that each individual manufacturer home sites, all 100 and some of them, had to actually be recognized individually as conforming with the regulations. If each site is not approved by the city council individually, how can we make a recommendation, you know, as to whether or not some lot may be too small, or some lot may be flooded, or whatever?
So I'm going to jump in.
Because, yeah, because that has never been done so far. The only thing that has been done is looking at the site as a whole. But here, at least when we were looking at only 31 sites, it was my understanding that the sites themselves had to be measured with the setbacks, with the indication of the easements for BPW, et cetera, et cetera. And now you seem to think that we're just going to look at the site as a whole and not look at each individual manufacturer home site. Sorry, Max.
I think there's no question that there's going to be at least a few of these, and I didn't go through the whole thing, but there's going to be at least a few of these that are non-conforming lots. There, I don't think there's any question about it. I think that the idea is that the site plan, it has to be done as a whole because that's the way the use works. But each, if it's non-conforming, then each of those sites, once they're on there, if there's a replacement or something like that, they would have to go to the board of adjustment or get a variance or do what, you know, go through the normal processes.
Or get a building permit.
Or get a building permit if they met the requirements.
Yeah, but to have a building permit, is it necessary that the manufacturer home site, and what is called manufacturer home site, I'm going to use the term lot because it's just too complicated.
Right, leased area.
Each lot has to actually be certified, for lack of a better word, individually, and measured individually.
Yeah, that's what the purpose of the surveys.
Yeah, and that's the surveys, right?
Yes.
Which we don't have yet, but I understand that these surveys exist. Is that correct?
The survey was included as part of the packet, and every single land leased area has a meets and bounds legal description, and there are pins, property markers, in the ground in the community. As part of the review for the conditional use, you are not looking individually at those, you are looking at it holistically. So on Cooper Circle, there's lots that are maybe 18 feet wide. They exist that way to the, up and to the, yep, there you go, thank you, Blue. They exist.
But how can you say that they exist since they've never been measured?
They have been measured.
By whom?
This surveyor has measured them, and they will end up signing and sealing this plan because that's how we got all the meets and bounds legal descriptions on these plans.
So basically, the approval by the city, if the city decides to approve this plan, this map, or this survey, if you want to call it a survey, as incomplete as it may be without the mention of the marshals and so forth, if the city approves this as a whole, that approval actually carries with it the approval of each individual site in the measurements indicated on this map. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Provided, however, that if it was a lot that was non-conforming?
Yes.
They would still need to get whatever variance or anything.
Yes, but I assume this will be the subject of our discussions during the meeting and not during the hearing.
Exactly. Excuse me. Yes, do we have the Chair Moser on the line again? Melanie, just speak up if you're there. Not hearing from Melanie, we'd be more than delighted to hear from Councilmember Marasco.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm just asking for a structural comment about the meeting proceedings so that we do not lose families.
Yes.
Could we move to the public and then come back to the applicant? I mean, all your questions are good, but I'm very concerned.
I want to, thank you. I think that, I want to get through with the applicant because I think that we're just about there. Are there any other questions of the applicant that we have right now? And let me be clear, we can all submit questions in writing, which I encourage especially someone to do, and they will, and we will have those, the record will be open for 10 days, and we will have those before we meet to consider when we have our discussion.
My recommendation is to keep it open for 14 days because the translation's not going to be done for 10 days.
Let's, 14 days. Hearing, no objection?
Should we do 20 because of that holdup?
No, because you need to make a decision within 30. You need to make a decision at your March meeting.
14 days. And, thank you. Great, now, yes, thank you. Let us, let's...
Just for clarification, that is Monday, March 10th at 4:00 PM.
Okay, so, good. Thank you. Let us move to, and I would like to just prioritize here, I do want to hear from residents. I want to hear from the public in general, but in particular, I want to hear from residents, especially any that may have children or people that need to get home at a reasonable hour. So, and this is either in Spanish or in English. I can use my minor in Spanish to try to understand a little bit here. So anybody from the public? Rick, I'd like to just hold, just in case we do have some residents here. Thank you. I do want to hear from you though, Rick, I really do.
And Rich, can I be the microphone reminder? Is, when you go back and listen to the YouTube video, it's hard to hear comments unless you almost want your mouth touching it.
Yes, thank you.
One inch.
Hello, Mike.
And welcome, join us, sit down, please.
Welcome, please state your name, address, and as Deborah just said, please hold the microphone close to your...
My name is Terry Jarrett Saunders, MD. I've had, we've had our place over at Donovan's for 16 years, and I am part of the HOA. And first of all, I would love to, and I'm turning my back for every...
You can't, we need, thank you.
I'm sorry. I would like to congratulate everyone who stuck with it to make sure, all the community members to make sure that we got clean air, clean water and sewer. Seven years, we had sewer, we had water everywhere, and took an enormous community effort, and I know I'm facing you, but I do want you guys to know, thank you. It was very difficult, our community suffered quite a bit, but I'm really proud every day of us for really forcing that issue. Second of all, I'm hoping through the LPC process that we get some structure in our community. We had no structure. We don't, I mean, none. And so I'm hoping this will help us access some sort of structure in our community. And thirdly, during the zoning process, we were repeatedly assured that quality of life issues would be discussed here at the LPC, at this conditional use, just not putting in 30 trailers and saying, hey, but what is the quality of life that we would like to have? 31 new homes crammed into unusable space. We are cynicism, Louis. We demand a carefully thought-out plan that serves the community needs, not just the needs of the landlords. Every day, we see examples of well-planned communities here in Lewis, every day, every day. 13 homes, parking for 60 people, has that factored in in any of the spaces that they're looking at? The manufactured home leases, which are a legal Delaware entity, require two parking spaces. And though he says there's two parking spaces, those who live there now often have one parking space, and in the summer and when folks are coming, there is no parking, people are parking on the streets. Our electrical infrastructure is outdated, dangerous, rotten and inadequate. So I don't even understand why we would think of putting any homes in when just last week with the windstorm, folks' lights were flickering on and off, circuits breaking, and we have a picture of the famous electric pole where residents sistered the pole because it was falling down. And during the construction, one of our light poles fell down. After the sewer and water was completed, we're finding that water is draining under people's trailers where they sort of dug the pits to go into your home. I'm trying to figure out, if we've got water draining now, then how is this going to be accommodated for 30 more trailers? The lighting is very poor. I think we only have two or three, maybe four or five streetlights, and it's very, very dark there. Speeding is a huge problem for families and community. We have children there, they like to play, there is no place to play, and we're not sure how to keep the children safe. Trash, construction materials disorder around the space for many years. And our question is, are these trailers going to be leased to random people, or are they going to be sold to homeowners? Because Delaware has one leased, and that lease is for manufactured homeowners. And are these, everyone going to get the common lease that we have? Will they, one of the things, and I know my time is almost up, and this is really important, and it got kind of passed through during zoning, is that we were considered a manufactured home community. And now, since we've gotten annexed to Lewis, we have renters, we have landlords, we have randos, we have people coming in and out. A manufactured homeowner's community is different from a manufactured community. When we own our homes, the community becomes safer, self-contained and self-governing. The 3% green space.
Thank you, thank you so much. I extremely value your very articulate comments, and I ask you to please submit your comments for the record. They will be read.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have, Rich, they were sent out this afternoon.
Great.
We got all those in the...
Thank you, Adam. Others, again, queremos español también. Por favor.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Good evening. My name is Sharon Ash. I'm a 13-year resident of Donovan Smith. And with the most recent survey from Miller &amp; Lewis Incorporated, it seems as though my lot, which has been there for decades, part of my house is off of my lot site, and 2/3 of my shed is exempt from my lot survey. So I'm not quite sure, it's B16, I'm not quite sure why that survey, I've never received an answer from anyone, so this is a perfect community. The open areas have always confused me, B15 and the lots across the street, as during the installation, there were water and sewer installations put into these empty lots that are now marked as open area. My question is, are these future sites? And the fact about, talking about the annexation, Donovan Smith has never recalculated the costs that we're paying to this day for trash pickup and recycling that Lewis has been doing since the week they designated us part of the city of Lewis. So I think it would be very nice if that were compensated and stopped, reduced from our current rent, and compensated for paying double for our trash and recycling. There's a lot of other issues that I think can be addressed later on, but most importantly, in the month of February, my lights surged twice. When I went to my breaker box, it was the energy coming from the pole to my home. This has happened twice. It happened years more ago, which blew up my hot water heater. I have not received any satisfactory compensation, nor will anyone even come out and address this issue. My electricity was transferred from a fuse box to a circuit breaker by the same electric company that is subcontractor of Donovan Smith. I thought that would be a wise thing to do, and I've done that. So everything is in compliance except for the grid, which is the responsibility of KDM. And I don't know how it's going to be sufficient to take care of 31 new homes and however many families, the number of people in each of these families.
Sharon, can I ask a clarifying question, please? I just wanted to be clear that before Donovan, before the mobile home park was annexed, you were paying a fee for trash pickup?
Yes.
And after that, when the city of Lewis took on that responsibility, you were not, if I heard you correctly, there should have been a reduction in fees because that is now being taken on by the city of Lewis. But there was no reduction in your fees as a result of that? Is that correct?
Correct. And our rent was raised, you know, last year, it was approved, and now we're paying 30-some dollars more a month.
Can I follow up too? Is, so there is, to be clear, lot rent and the fees are charged separately, or is the lot rent include the fees?
Our lot rent includes services, all the fees.
But it's been raised, not reduced?
Yes, ma'am.
And under law, what do you, do you know what you're allowed to have? There's a percentage each year in mobile home parks in Delaware?
CDIU. CDIU.
Okay, okay. And it's within that?
Further clarification, is the trash pickup fee identified specifically and separately in the fees that you pay, or are all the fees commingled without line-by-line breakdown?
Within our lease, we have park rules and regulations and an index of all of the service fees broken down, but they are all included in the one monthly lot rent to include a schedule of fees that is attached to our lease contracts.
I'm sorry, I'm still not clear if there is, no, it's not your fault, it's me. I'm still not clear as if, if it is possible to know from either the documentation that you receive or information posted at the office, to know how much you are actually charged for trash pickup. Is it like $20 a month or $30 a month? No, it's all mixed up together. You don't...
It's not listed. It's not broken down. It just is a service, a schedule of services.
Thank you, I understand now, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Other residents in particular, other members of the public? Name, rank and serial number?
Yeah, I'm Rick Moore, Dutchess Court. Okay, I want to make a few quick comments. Grandfathering does not erase history, and the HUD compliance needs verification. All the statements made about how everything is in compliance hasn't necessarily been verified, so how it's going to be verified is up in the air. Have police been adequately provided, or has the excuse been made that they cannot properly enforce? How safe was the community previously? What data are available to assess prior conditions, including fines and non-compliance? That hasn't been rectified. Assertion and application that property complies is not verification. At the time of application, empty lots did not pose a... At the time of application, empty lots did not pose a housing hazard, but may, if built upon, with substandard conditions. Also, there were hazards of abandoned oil tank, faulty wiring, fire danger, et cetera. It hasn't been rectified. So why would approval be given when there are conditions that have never been fixed? This was a dump site at one point, although that's been denied repeatedly. I have pictures. It was a dump site. Has it ever been cleaned up? Annexation did not rectify pre-existing hazards. Housing needs to be safe and affordable, not just affordable. Charter Section 23 of the city of Lewis refers to a board of health. Why isn't it appointed, and why isn't it examining the health hazards? It's in our charter, use it. Assign inspection of conditions for which landowners were repeatedly fined in the county and which has never been remediated. Conditional use is not grandfathered, so why not require safest current conditions at 5,000 square feet? There was a manufactured home community in the last two years that had better spacing and had a fire that killed someone. That was close by here. Why are we approving this? Why are we not demanding that safety that's never been provided be provided? That health conditions that have never been assured be assured? And this poses a risk to the entire community, not just those who live there. And there's never been proper enforcement. This was a hazard to high school students who used to go over there for their supplies of illicit materials. So let's pay attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can I have a follow-up question?
You may have a follow-up question.
Thank you. One of the things I was going to ask the city planner, in the perspective of the scheduling of our meeting, the next meeting, piggybacks on the comments that have been made by the gentleman and by the lady before, and I was wondering if that is something that could satisfy, in part, the requirements that you have stated. I was going to ask the city planner, did the city officials inspect the property in the context of this CU application to verify that the applicant and the property are now in compliance with the City Code and HUD regulations? In particular, as concerns regulations dealing with health and safety, including possibly the removal of unoccupied and derelict trailers, if any? Would this type of inspection meet the request that you just expressed? And if I may make a comment, Mr. Chairman, the reason I'm bringing this at this point is that if the city were to decide to inspect the property to verify that it meets current standards for health and safety, obviously, this inspection would have to be completed before we have our session to discuss what type of recommendation to give to the city. So we would need to factor enough time for this. But that assumes, of course, that the city decides that we should have these inspections. And I'm not sure that I understand exactly how, without, in the context of a hearing, we can decide that we want or that we don't want an inspection report before we examine the application. There, I'm at a loss, and I'm looking at the left side of the table for clarification.
Thank you. I would ask both our attorney and our city planner for clarification on that, because it does seem to me that we could, when we forward our recommendation to city council, require that that be done as a condition, or recommend, recommend that city council. But I would look to clarification for, to our attorney and to our city planner on that point.
So typically, the code, the building inspectors are in the development daily, if not multiple times a day, to look for code violations, and if there are, they send violations to those property owners to work with them to get those taken care of. We do acknowledge that there are a couple of houses that are boarded, and they cannot be removed until they go through the correct process, because they are owned by somebody, and you have to go through the state process. So the community is working on getting those removed, but we have to go through the proper process. But every time there is something that shows up, you know, it can show up and disappear before they get out there, but the building inspectors are out on a daily basis through that community to verify compliance with the property maintenance code.
And is there an avenue for the residents to make complaints to the building, to the inspection department? And do the residents know that now that they're in the city of Lewis, they do have an avenue and procedure for making complaints?
Yes and yes. Yes, we've received, we, they are aware of it, and we've received a number of complaints from property owners to address other issues in the, in the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Could I just ask of the applicant, while we have the lawyer for the applicant here?
Let's finish the public hearing, save your question, and then grab him.
Are there other, are there additional hearing comments from the public? And any online, by the way?
There's a question one online.
Great. Please put them through.
It says, according to Sussex County and city of Lewis annexation records, 120 land use areas were annexed in. So is the 130 number the KDM attorney cites accurate? If so, by what process was that changed? Well, may we find it? We cannot locate its record or the process in the record. Thank you. And thank you, commissioners, for your commitment and advocacy. Ms. Malinowski.
It's public comment, I'm just, we don't have to reply to that, to any public comment. I don't know what you want me to do.
I think it's a good question and something that we will endeavor to answer as a part of the record.
Melanie is back.
Good. Let's try the third time.
Welcome.
Please, Melanie, just start speaking. That's, that's a... We're waiting to hear the booming voice of Commissioner Moser. Try unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. There you go.
All right. Okay, I have several questions of the petitioner. I would ask how we are to evaluate the open space adequacy when there is no topo, no floodplain, no wetlands, and no forest indicated on the plans? That's my first question. My second is, how will the new homes meet the impervious limit when the unit plus two parking spaces must be included? And my third question is, as there will be more than 5,000 square feet of new impervious for this development, where and how will stormwater management be provided? Those are my questions.
Is the applicant able to respond to those, please?
I can certainly try. I'm not sure I got them all, but I think she asked about, why is the floodplain and wetlands not shown on the plan? And the answer is, it's not required by your code.
Actually, it is. It is.
Then we'll show it.
That's why I asked for it.
We have an opportunity to present before our final plan, and I believe Janelle sent a letter.
I told them they need to show it.
Indicating all of the other things we have to indicate. So I stand corrected, number 2B is indicate the FEMA floodplain format preference. So we will certainly provide that. And I already mentioned earlier tonight, we'll indicate if there are any wetlands on the property. That is comment 2, I'm sorry, comment 9 on Janelle's letter. So we will provide those. In terms of impervious surface coverage, we're not, my understanding is, we're not disturbing 5,000 square feet or more of soil area, so we're not required by the Sussex Conservation District to do anything more, but I'm certainly happy to look into that and confirm that with Jessica Watson.
I think the questions of the chair was about the impervious surface requirement of the city of Lewis, not of Sussex County.
For the individual lot coverage. And on that, we have to, we have to calculate in the manufactured home, the sheds, or any other buildings, and paved surfaces. I was through there today, and I did not see any paved surfaces that were pervious. They all appear to be blacktop macadam.
So my understanding is that the code requires no more than 50% for the main structure and no more than 65% for the lot in total of impervious surface. And my understanding is that each of these lots comply with those requirements. If, if that's not correct, I'd be happy to have someone show me why that's not correct.
Yeah, I believe the chair, sorry, Melanie Moser, Mrs. Moser, also mentioned the parking spaces, right? That the two parking spaces that would have to be factored in and which by definition are impervious, because when there's a car on top of it, they are becoming impervious, right?
Right. So as, as to pre-existing lots, if there was not sufficient room for two parking spaces, that was a non-conforming condition that existed previously, but obviously, all new lots would have to comply with that. And I believe that a vast majority of the existing lots actually do. There are certainly some that do not.
They, that is part of our code now that we have passed, that any new construction requires two parking spaces. Correct?
It's always been code.
Oh, it's always been code.
Well, I, you know, I, with regard to non-conforming lots, it's impossible for them, you know, if there's a non-conforming lot that cannot...
The ones that are already there with homes on them. We're, you know, we don't go back and retroactively ask people to add this parking, but anything that is new construction requires it.
Sure. And we understand we will have to comply with that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Excuse me, a quick question. Given the number of likely unconditional lots on this property, how did you arrive at the number of 31 additional buildings?
I don't believe that that number is correct.
It would be 28, per your site plan that was submitted.
So here's the thing. The MOU with the state that started all of this says it's 130 lots. When they built, when BPW built the sewer and water system, there are 130 hookups. Now, some of them, and I don't know for sure exactly what the designations are, but there's a house and an office in the community, and those have at least one each of those 130 hookups. So I'm gonna have to try to figure that out and answer that question for you, but I believe there should be 130 lots. Now, some of them, we talked about this earlier, have already been combined. And what I said earlier, I stand by, that if the lot is shown on this plan as combined, for example, E1 and E2, G12 and G13, they can't be separated without you blessing that. We would have to come back and ask that those lots be subdivided. So that's, if you will, the double counting, where it should be just one lot, and that happens in a couple of occasions. And then likewise, there are six lots, as I count them, that are shown as open areas, and that was a surveyor's error. Those are not part of the open space, those are actual lots. So there's six lots there. I'll endeavor to get you, before we come back to you, a final number on exactly how many lots there are out there. What I can tell you is that we're, we have 130 sewer and water hookups. The MOU used the number 130. We know we have 90 existing homes. I don't believe there are 40 vacant lots out there, because at least two of them are the house and the office, and some of them are combined, like E1 and E2 and G12 and G13. So I'll try to get a roster to you to show you exactly how many vacant lots we're talking about. I think it's probably in the neighborhood of 33, actually, but...
Isn't it correct that in the presentation that your client submitted to the city council on April 4th, 2022, it was indicated, and I have the document here, there's a red arrow, Donovan Smith MHB is comprised of 127 home lots, all presently utilizing private onsite septic and water utility service. So it is on the basis of this assertion that the city council subsequently undertook the various procedures that led to the site being sanitized, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm sorry.
Do you want me to give you your own document?
Were you referring to the March 1, 2024 letter?
Here, I'm on April 4th.
April 4th. I don't have that, unfortunately.
Well, you can find it on the city's website. This is the presentation, the PowerPoint presentation that was made to the city council.
I'm gonna provide some...
Sorry?
Why don't, why don't we submit that as a, as a question?
Yeah, what submitted is a question.
Yes.
It's a question, yes. So, okay, let's simply say that it needs to be clarified. We can leave it at this for today, because it's complicated, yes.
We have, we have one more question, and you can submit that as a, as a question.
Well, I will submit it during our meeting.
Thank you, commissioners. I have a question about the schedule, with full appreciation that we have a clock to do certain things by. But my clarification question, because mayor and city council want the commissioners to have a comprehensive review.
Right.
So that you can give us your best recommendation. So, Mr. Walton, what I'm interested in is, this doesn't sound just like Q and A back and forth. It sounds like the planning commission does not have a complete application. So what I want to know is, does the clock start at a complete application? I understand there's back and forth, but this seems very far from complete application, and I feel like we're putting ourselves on a clock, so actually, you're just gonna put us on a clock. And so I'm trying to figure out a way legally and appropriately that the applicant also has time to provide the information, but that we at council are gonna get the best recommendation from the planning commission.
Thank you.
I would like to strongly support what Ms. Marasco just said, because that was my comment, is that I feel that there are errors in what is presented to me, as admitted by Mr. Pardey, and that we are looking at an incomplete application that is missing the wetland delineation. This is the sort of thing that, when I was a teacher, I would have gone, I'm gonna send you home to work on that again.
So, John, Mr. Pardey, a little bit is gonna fall to you, because there are some things that we all agree need to be changed or updated in counts, et cetera. So, and we have a plan, we have a submission, we have a 30-day code requirement, right? So I think you know, I think you can sense what the planning commission is thinking, because they want to review basically sort of an updated and sort of accurate plan that reflects what's been discussed today.
Not even sort of. We want an accurate, yeah.
So, but it's not our, in other words, it's not our call. What I'm asking is, can you, would you be willing to submit an updated plan and at least wait for at least an additional 30 days, the code requirement, that we have to act in 30 days, right? We have a submission, we have to act. So I'm asking you, would you let it go? Would you agree to resubmit with, you know, responsive to Janelle's letter and some of the things that we're here today?
And with the translation.
And extend for 30 days, sort of, that time period, which is what's requested by the...
So I'm gonna have to confer with my client about that, but I have a question for Janelle first, because there's a preliminary plan that has to be submitted and approved, and then a final plan that has to be submitted and approved. Is that right?
Correct.
And my understanding was that some of these items that the commissioners are asking for are items that are required for final site plan review, but maybe not for preliminary.
Some of it, yes. Typically, you usually do see most of that at preliminary. A lot of the little stuff, again, it's just up... of the little stuff, again, it's just updating and little stuff. But you've talked about items on this plan that are mislabeled.
Yeah.
Which I cannot review a plan that has inaccurate information. So, I cannot provide the commission, council, nor the public or the applicant the right information.
I understand. I, I think the only discrepancy really between what we're seeking and what is shown on the survey are the areas designated as open areas that are in fact lots, and we should be able to correct that pretty easily. And then obviously, we committed to provide the wetlands and identify the floodplain.
The floodplain is really, I, I, based on the information I have seen, I do not believe there are wetlands on there, but you were, been asked to, to verify that. But definitely the location of the wetlands. I would like to have a conversation to verify that some of those open space areas that were always open space or formerly septic fields are not turning into lots.
Yeah, I, I think...
That I want clarification on.
Well, why wouldn't they be turned into lots if they're just vacant and they're not former septic fields?
Have they been examined by the EPA or by Denrec? Soil samples, anything?
No, we haven't.
I'm asking too.
So, I think that's what needs to be clarified. So, it sounds like we need some clarification on what was submitted.
Okay, so, this reverts to my, my point that I was making earlier, that it seems like we should have a report from inspectors in the areas of health and safety of the facilities before we, the, the planning commission, give a recommendation to the city council. I, I don't think we sent, we can kick back to the city council a recommendation without having ourselves at the benefit of this.
Could I just, could I just seek the advice of attorney here as to whether or not, what, what our recourse is here as far as extending this?
So...
It does seem to me that, that, that this, that all of us would be well-served, including the applicant, with an extension of time here in order to correct the application, to have more accurate information. But let me, let me ask our attorney for advice.
The code says they submit and we have 30 days or it's otherwise deemed approved. And that's the reason I went to the applicant, because they submitted it to us, right? It's their application. If they wanna go forward, knowing the feelings of the planning commission. And that's what we, that's what we do, and then that factors into the recommendation that you guys made. But, I mean, so, but the code says we got review in 30 days. We had a public hearing, we're gonna review in 30 days absent waiver.
So, may I ask a follow-up question? So, legally, if we feel that the application is incomplete, does that provide us with grounds?
It gets dicey. So, we're just gonna call it unsatisfactory.
Okay. Because we have heard from your own admission, too, that the, that you need an act, that the survey, there were errors in the survey. I, I feel as if it needs to be re-surveyed.
It doesn't need to be re-surveyed.
It's not a big deal to survey. I've surveyed my own.
It is a big deal. It's a very expensive and time-consuming. The, the lot area boundaries are already surveyed and marked on the plan. All that needs to be done is the areas, and there are six of them, that are shown as open areas when in fact they're supposed to be lots. And on the survey, they don't have the setbacks indicated, which is what Janelle needs to review. So, we would like to request time to resubmit our application so that, for example, the lot area between A12 and A13, that should be a lot.
Do you have a five-foot setback on you?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Not all of them.
I misspoke, but maybe not all of them. There may be.
There's a setback there.
There's not one.
Not all of them.
But what else are there? There's not one there and there, or there and there.
This one's not there.
Yeah, but this one's not there. This one's not there. This one's not there.
While they're talking, can I ask Janelle a quick question?
Yes.
Back to your question about we're taking a holistic... I, excuse me, just one quick question. I would like to accept your, your offer of resubmitting the application with these clarifications on it.
I mean, we got a, we got a list from Janelle's to what she wanted added to the survey. So, we were gonna do that anyway, but we only got it two days ago. So, we're really busy.
Yeah, I, look, in fairness to my client, you know, and, and Janelle's been wonderful, honestly. I'm not throwing her on the bus. She's been fantastic. You really should be proud of your staff. She's done an amazing job. It's a very difficult project. But her last set of comments, we didn't get until the end of last week, and that's why we haven't been able to respond to a lot of them yet. We anticipated, and I think Janelle anticipated this as well, that we would do that before we submitted our final plan. But we're happy to go back and correct the very few things that are not shown on this survey and resubmit it within 30 days, if that would be acceptable.
And overlay the floodplain and, and other omissions that are in there now.
Assuming that our surveyor can make that happen, we'd be happy to try. And, and look, we, this is for Max's benefit, we're willing to waive the deadline for the planning commission to act, because that's what he's concerned about, that the statute or the code requires you to act within a certain amount of time after conducting a hearing. And we're willing to waive that so that we can resubmit our plan and show you these items that you've been asking for. And I think we can do it within 30 days. If we can't, I'll let Max know. We may need a little more time, depending on what our surveyor tells us, but I'm hopeful we can get it done fairly quickly.
And I would like to just make this as a friendly comment or suggestion, is that on the city of Lewis, on the excellent development planning website that Janelle puts together, it's called, if you go to the planning commission, then you look for the planning activity website, development reviews. In there, and the development reviews are, if you click on the links, there's a link for every development that would just come in front of us. And if you look at the kind of materials that we are accustomed to seeing here at the Lewis Planning Commission, and how comprehensive the site plans are, I think that could be instructive and helpful.
This is a little different, but thank you, though. This is, because there are reasons that this is, that this was an existing, there are differences.
Certainly. And, and we've seen a continuum of, of projects come through, but we generally, there's a certain standard of things that we expect to see.
So, well taken.
I understand the spirit of the comment, and I take it in that spirit.
So, here's what I think you ought to do. I've been trying to figure out what to do while I was sitting over here, but you have an open public hearing, you have an applicant who's gonna give you a resubmission. We have a 30-day deadline, which is waived. So, here's what I think the best thing to do is to continue the public hearing, right? Just continue it. And we'll have a continuation, we'll pick it back up at whatever day, you know, if Mr. Pardee gets it to us, we'll, we'll get it scheduled as quickly as reasonably possible at your next available meeting. But we'll just call it a continued public hearing, because we took testimony today, and I assume we're gonna be able to take testimony at the next hearing, but we're just gonna continue it. Does that seem fair, first of all, to the applicant, Mr. Pardee?
Yes. Yes.
And does that seem fair to members of the planning commission?
Yes. And, and we, and we thank the applicant for his flexibility, and, and I think Commissioner Thompson had a...
Yeah, I just, Janelle, my question is back to your, your comment about looking at this as a holistic thing. I, I see two items here, really. It's the annexation of the whole plan, but the supplements for 31 lots, that's another decision that we're making as a part of this, or that's, I, that's...
No, I, you kinda need to get out of the fact there are about the 31 lots. They're vacant lots within the community, and somebody can take their home and leave tomorrow if they want. Right now, what nobody can do is bring a new home in.
Okay.
Until this conditional use, so if unfortunate, if, if a fire happens or a wind happens and somebody loses their home, they cannot replace their home right now because they do not have a conditional use.
Okay. That's good.
So, you are looking at it holistically. It doesn't matter the number of vacant lots and the number of units the, the property owner wants to bring in. There are vacant lots within the community. They will all have to comply with the setbacks and the lot coverage and the building height and the separation distance. And if they don't, then they have to figure out what to do. But you're looking at it as a whole. Think of it as, it, it, because this is weird. This is definitely unusual. You're looking at a development, you're, you're looking at an existing development kind of through the eyes of a new development, but it's not a new development. It's an existing development you're trying to go, does that development make sense in the city?
Well, for me, the, the supplements that we were given of the 31 lots were skewing what I was here to look at. That's what I'm trying to, and you've clarified that.
Yeah, you're looking at it as the holistic community.
And I, I just wanna, I just wanna say that, that, that I, because I had just come onto the planning commission when we annexed Donovan Smith into the city. And the whole purpose and, was to improve living conditions within Donovan Smith. I apologize that it is always a difficult, arduous, frustrating process to get there from here. But it has been the, 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 the purpose, it has been the intention of this planning commission, and I know of the Lewis City Council, to help the residents achieve a better standard of living, one that is safe and healthy. And, and so, this is a part of that process. And I, I really thank the residents for their commitment, their patience, and I, I want to work with the developer here and, and bring him along so that he can be a part of this. It has been difficult, but we are gonna continue that effort. And, and with that, unless there is something else, I would like to close this out.
Hold on, hold on.
And I'd like to ask Max for, for closing comments.
Couple, couple things.
Thank you.
Number one, we're still gonna do the translation within the 10 days. There will be no...
14 or 10?
Well, it was 10 for the translation.
Okay.
Right? So, it's 10 for the translation. The public record will remain open until the public hearing happens again. Okay?
Good. Thank you.
All right? So, so there's no gonna be closing of the public hea... Anybody disagrees, speak now. But I think if you're gonna leave the public hearing open, you need to leave the public hearing open for the whole time.
Yes.
Right? For comment open for the entire time. I think it would be helpful for the planning commissioners, if they have questions, to go ahead and submit them, right? Because then the applicant, when they come back for the second part of the public hearing, would have a better opportunity to answer them and get them together. So, so, and that may be for staff, too, right? Or me, whoever that may be, right? To submit those questions and get them, get them together, and then we'll have, maybe have a better ability to have a more streamlined hearing to, to answer those, whether or not that be in writing before the hearing, or whether or not that be at the hearing itself. So...
And we will have an interpreter at the next meeting as well.
I'm gonna work on that. I'm gonna, yeah, I, I assume so, yes.
We might, you know, we have such a community of people who are, have a depth of breadth, you know, that there may be someone who, here in our community, who would volunteer. But I was just going to also offer that anyone who wants to re-watch, or if you want to hear the questions again, we are televised on our YouTube channel. And I, I know many of us as commissioners go back and re-watch. So, just if you know the date and go to our YouTube channel, it's all there.
Because it's so riveting. It's great, great TV.
It's good. My husband watches on YouTube.
So, you're not gonna adjourn, yeah. You're gonna, you're going to, to, what's the word I wanna use?
Continue the...
Continue the, thank you. Continue the public hearing till a date to be determined.
We're gonna continue the public hearing till a date to be determined.
Okay, so, we need a motion and a vote on that, or it's just...
We can do it either way.
But if there's consensus, you're just...
Yeah.
I would make a motion to continue...
Is there an objection to that?
Well, there's a motion. You got a motion.
I'd make a motion to continue the public hearing until the date as which a new public hearing is scheduled.
A date to be determined.
A date to be determined.
A date to be determined in the future.
Is there a second?
Yes, I will second that.
Any objections? Any...
Nope.
I'll call for, what is it? Call for the...
Call for vote. All those in favor should...
Call for vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those who object, the ayes have it.
And I would like the record to reflect that the applicant has waived the 30-day time period, which is within the code.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Janelle, Janelle, what is the difference?